Oh, Jesus. Six twenty-nine.
We hate to interrupt you, but.
I'm so good to go.
All right, I cannot get Wi-Fi working, so I can't get. You know, be picking up.
Okay. Will you turn it back on? All right, I hit this. Then.
Town office, do we do town office?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Are you ready?
Yes.
All right, six thirty, so open up for me. And we will start with the budget. Budget. All right. We will review the minutes from October fifth meeting, is there any questions or concerns to be brought up? You have a second? Make a second of your favor. Rio. All right. And we'll move to the historical society disposal at transfer station. I may have to discuss that.
Sure, um, so. You know, asking, was this from you, Doug?
Yes.
Okay, uh, clarification on the town. Uh, continuing a practice. Uh, taking the historical societies. Uh, basically, uh, there are no fees charged to the historical society. It's like Gary Brown signed this back in nineteen ninety-nine, and I think it was just, he just kind of wanted to get on record that's clarification as far as continuing that.
Yeah, reinforcement for members, a lot of the. Longer-serving members. Expressed an interest, you know, we need to look at this, and it was. Noted that we had this agreement when they had a hard time finding. Finally were able to put their hands on something from there and. That was a, looks like it was probably a town manager that seen. The extent of this is pretty minimal, right? Just another, knowing for sure what we can do.
Yeah.
You know. Very little. We look at our building, some of our other buildings, very little thing, very few things. There are some things that there is. Life is, is been is expiring. Subject to feed.
Definitely.
We don't have a lot, and you know, the main concern is that we've got a very normal budget to be called volunteer. Some of the funds to come away. It's looking for reinforcement and connections. Select one. Or I mean. You don't think anything that you guys would be telling where you buy later? Go against what the current ordinances?
No, no, this would be strictly anything that's normal. Just all those things. Organizational material, you know, there's a few broken wooden displays and things like that. Probably need to go.
Nothing, nothing would go into the transfer station of work except. I was asking first to. Just kind of pop it back up. Um, do you look for something?
Yeah, I mean, town managers change hands, select board changes hands, I mean, maybe it's, I think you're wise to commend the. Revisit the matter, um. So we're gonna, and it's definitely bring it up again. Yeah, I mean, um. Think we can cross that bridge and come to it, uh, we keep an eye on that, but, um. Yeah, I think, uh, it makes sense for the select board to express their. Their thoughts on it, and I'm, I'm, I'm all for it personally, I seen. One of the previous town managers gave permission, so. I'm okay with it, no, no one has reservations. On the board.
I did, um, speak to George last week, he didn't know anything about it, so that's another reason.
And George doesn't see any issues with it, right?
Um, he was a little hesitant thinking that where we had a budget, we should be able to pay. You know, I'm glad he's taking that stance, frankly. We don't have much of a budget, right? You can handle it.
Yeah, then wait, you remain fresh.
So we have a motion? Okay, so we'll make motion to accept it for one year. Yeah. And, uh. For a second? Second, all right, all of the favor. All right, we would, uh. You'd ask for, uh, an item to be taken out of order directly from the discussion on the website? Okay, we got something that you.
Sure.
So we're gonna move down to item ten, uh, the town website. And then, uh. Give, uh, town manager a second to. Your center.
Okay, um. This is the website that I recommend, select board. Um, twice. Um, still. Making that recommendation. Um, and, uh. I base that on. Uh, the budget and, um. With some of the concerns that were raised by. The panel that took time to, uh. Look at some of the things that they felt were important, these capabilities that. The website should have. The, uh, the areas that were identified were an alert center with email and text notifications. Community calendar of events. Fillable forms, compliant with ADA, and easy to navigate, as well as a robust administrative process. Um, I contacted Town Web, or excuse me, Town Cloud. And the, uh. So to so, to start off, the alert center, uh, that is something that they could offer. It's actually some, it's technology that they're currently working on now to offer to their clients, they expect to offer that at no cost. When that happens, however, at this time, they would use the service, they would use, there's a variety of services out there, my understanding, constant contact is one, mail chimp is another. Um, so, uh, that's about, uh, about twelve dollars a month, twelve or thirteen dollars a month, depending on which one you pick. Um, so they would be able to integrate that service into this website. Um, I would tell you that this website is actually something that they did, I didn't ask them to do this, this is a kind of a, an idea of what the website would look like, so people could get a. Picture of what that is. Um, I've been talking with people in the community and, uh, about community calendar of events is also something that people felt was important to have. Um, that is something that they have, they, they, he was able to easily pop one of those in there. Um, the great thing about this is that we can limit the permissions to this. Section only, um, so church, various church groups or historical society or anyone, the thought is, is that there's a lot of activities going on in town. With our rec department and, um, various groups and. We'd like to see things not overlap each other, you know, and so this would be one way to do that, if people were plugging in. Uh, you know, events that they had going on, uh, you know, one may reconsider that and setting up, you know, an event for that time in brain, so. Um. So anyway, that's, that meets the, uh, media events, or excuse me, calendar, um. Uh, community calendar. Um, and the other was fillable forms and, um. That is also something that they're able to do as well. The, something, find it here. So, fillable forms, um. So this is the, um, parks and rec section that's being, and, and this is all kind of, this is all under construction, this is kind of giving you an idea what things look like, so. Um. I sent over a couple registration forms, one is, uh. You know, register for online youth basketball, let's say. So the nice thing about this is the, um, you know, as the panel recognizes, yeah, I mean, it is definitely a time saver for everyone. Uh, and so we appreciate that. And. It's all. Kind of preloaded probably on the settings, I'm not a huge techy, uh, by any means, but I can plug in all this stuff here. And. I go in. Fill all that stuff, and so there's fillable forms, thought is that this would be able to be linked. You do capture these forms and do the wrong, uh. Uh, do, you know, do this work? Um, and as far as payment goes, um, that would probably be a link. Um, that we can put in there as well, so we'd be able to make payments and fill in. Fill out a registration form online. The, um. Easy to navigate is, in my opinion, it is easy to navigate, um. But that's a very subjective topic, so I won't focus too much on that. Um, and as far as the administrative process goes, it's been a lot for admins, and I think that's enough. For our town. Um. Budget was, was a big part of it, um, and we're gonna be talking about budget a little bit later on tonight, um. Out of a twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollar budget, I think I got about four thousand dollars left in there. For the remaining, remainder of the year. Uh, big part of that's for trio, about seventeen thousand is for trio. Um, this, this proposal is. Is comparable to what we're currently spending on our, our current website, so, um. I kind of think we can have our cake and eat it too, we can. Uh, we can have a website with the things that the, uh, the group had identified. And, um, still keep things under budget. Pretty much my. My spiel. Yeah.
Either one of you who have, uh, have response or.
Aaron, do they have any? Did they give you any idea when that the sometimes stuff will be revealed?
Oh, so, well, the, again, like with the. The sometimes stuff, I mean, I'd be a little more specific, I guess, but like as far as the notifications go. Um, I mean, that's, that's available now, it's just a twelve dollar a month expense. Um, so I don't know what else you're thinking.
Turning a hundred and forty-four dollars for that service. To a service that's how much compared to the other two?
Um, well, um. So. Revised charge is fifty-three hundred a year, civic plus is forty-seven hundred a year. They're looking at five and like five-year. Uh, five-year plans, um. The, um, my concern is, is that there were, um, in talking with Chris Haywood about this, there are, um. There are fees that can, that can be added on kind of thing, and I'm kind of worried about getting into that, um. He did, uh, kind of point those out. Um. This is, this is, you know, sorry.
Fees for who?
Uh, so just the other, the other, some of the other groups that we looked at, um. When you go to that union. I think Refresh was one of them, I could, let's see if I can pull up.
So they're not with Town Cloud, it's with the more expensive ones, they have additional fees arriving beyond.
Yeah, I feel, yeah, I, you know, this is convincing. You know, you can see what you're getting, and, and there's a lot of different things added on that you can pay for with these other sites. Um. You know, the devil's kind of in the details here, um. Civic Bus talks about, you know, you can add a business directory at eight hundred dollars a year, projects directory, three, five, properties, parks, spits, RFPs, two-twenty, these are different enhancements, they're optional enhancements. Um, text messaging, uh, up to twenty thousand texts is five fifty a year. Um, I believe the one that I've been looking at is about five hundred, so I don't know quite how many, I just don't know, I mean, we haven't really. I don't know if twenty thousand is gonna be too much or enough or, or what, um. So, um. Uh, additional pages of content migration, um, two hundred and fifty dollars for fifty pages. I'm just. You know, I, um, I kind of know what I'm getting into, I think, with Town Cloud, and I'm just kind of, that's kind of one of my concerns, and I don't know if. We go down that road, if, that, if there's gonna be. Um. Revised has, um, annual hosting and maintenance fee, nine fifty, again, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it's inclusive or what, there's just a lot of, you know, a lot of different. Numbers being thrown around here, so. Kind of pointed out a few things here that might explain it better than I could.
Let me see, that's a nice, we're definitely both over a starting point, you know, who's. But the other two, the Town Cloud. It sounds like he's talked about additional hours and a hundred and forty-four bucks a year for one service, which is far less.
Doug. Do you have any idea? How much of the town's adult population? Three thousand or so are plugged into the web? Aye, the digital. I don't really know, I don't have a clue, I think it's probably pretty significant. Really? You know. Even, even a lot of the. Most elderly folks.
Mature.
Yeah.
There, thank you, Chip, thanks.
You know, I do, just if, since I've. Got a comment here. Very, please, um. You know, one of the concerns that. It's kind of been floated around in the community and stuff is the exposure to what's going on. The select board and other meetings and things like that, and I really feel like this is the first time that. The town administration has taken a step. To do something, and it's really too, too bad to delay this thing where we try to. Get something into the budget next year, I mean, there's no guarantee you get, get it approved in the budget, you've got not, meaning. In front of you to take something and get it in place. Right away, and I don't know if there's a contract involved with it, but, um. You know, if you, it's gonna take you a couple or three years probably just to get a view of this thing. And get your administrative policies in place that you want to have. You know, for text messages, as an example, you know, what do you want a text message, and what's the extent of? You know, that's gonna take some feeling out for you, and you have, you can't jump into these things, oh, I mean. You know, if, if most of that stuff that we're looking for, this. Team was looking for. Seems to be available in one form or another in this town.
Thank you. So I got Amy and then David next, or? So Amy and then.
So just in general, but speaking with. Kind of the population is aligned, so to speak, I mean, I don't have the numbers off of my head, but, grow smart, part of, uh, the digital equity. Room, sort of the working with, it get a fairly accurate. If you want, but they still have it at.
Is it ten percent or is it sixty?
Well, the, the overall kind of back county number is around thirty. Twenty-five percent not, maybe a little less than that, just don't know.
We're gonna hire average age group thing. It's gonna be a different.
One of the, the first, David trust, um, one of the things you want to remember with that not connected number though, is we find that that is, oh, there's a lot of families that don't have internet, in terms of an internet service, they all have phones. So there's using internet, you know, they, you know, moving, but, yeah. Phone for internet, that's during COVID, we had several parents who were getting tethered. Um, you know, when I did, you know, on the lower end of social, social economic scale, there was a safety gathering. So. One thing, before I forget this, one thing that you want to make sure the town file or whoever, um, that I have the, to the cool website, it becomes mobile friendly. Okay, you have website, website that, you'd have to remember, that's probably going to be the way that more than fifty percent of the people in town are going to be doing their work. It depends, uh, to, uh, a bond, so it needs to be mobile friendly, the cool website, I, when I used it at that time. One of the reasons why we need to do a site is because it will actually automatically. I'll take whatever I put in to make it more friendly, so, um. The, the text message thing, I'm gonna warn you about that one. And if you got a call, and just today. Phone call, I don't want anymore, no damn.
Okay, I'm gonna maintain it.
Get on that load, get on that road, you can expect the phone on the phone at the town office to start with me a few months later, when people don't realize how to get off it. So, uh, uh, it's gotta be made very clear on the website, how to get in and out of text messages. Or because it will drive people crazy, and you're also running into situations where you have old numbers, you'll have a, you know, you'll have a number that now belongs to someone else. Because they, they, you know, you can give up your phone number and put care of that number back in the pool. And, uh, someone else will end up with it, and they keep getting the text message.
They don't care that the transfer station supposed to date due to environment weather.
Yeah, they got it, so. I get it, you know, our biggest difference from people who, we have several people who get new numbers. And I don't even know who did that, I live in Levan, you know, uh, why am I getting stuff from back of us? Um, and a lot of it, people who kids have moved on or grandparents have moved on, and, uh, they opted into something that couldn't, couldn't figure out how to opt out. Now, our system is also, uh. Automated, it pulls from my student information system, the parent number and stuff like that, and but most part cleans itself out, so. What we deal with is nothing compared to what you might end up dealing with, just let me know. I'm willing to offer, I, I could, willing to answer any question that I can, I, I, I was looking at that website, you know, for example, the calendar, with Google Calendar, which is a good idea, that people can subscribe to it, um. The, uh, the form thing. That's really, you know, I'm trying, it's not hard to do. Um. As far, one question I do have is what type of a contract? Would they be locked in the range of, if it's a three years? What, three years?
Yeah.
Were they all three years?
I, I'm not.
No, it's better one for five, I think.
Okay.
Do very.
Oh, you have a five?
Yeah.
Everybody's had a refresh built into it in their site, in their fourth year and their five years.
Um. But you're obviously kind of, kind of pick up, pick that up with doctor, you know, put something, you know, in place and then, and then, and then, it's down to me like you want people to change your mind. At least not for two years. Without any penalty.
Would just note too, um, this, with, with the cost that they've presented is a thirty percent. Uh, discount, so if after three years, it would, uh, by assumption is it's gonna go up.
I'm assuming the town lot is going to hold it?
What do you mean?
Uh. Young was thinking more, more web developer, both do.
Oh, 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 yes, yes, absolutely, they created it on the ground, sorry.
One of them, you mentioned that one of them, you're gonna charge the maintenance fee for hosting, and so forth, that in kind of. So.
It was built into the fee.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not clear of, uh, you know, on that, yeah.
Some questions? Happy to help.
So.
I've been doing it for years.
If we, if we did town finally, um, cloud, the only thing doing diligence would be. Just to make sure that it's gonna work okay on a mobile app.
My understanding is that it does.
If they do a mock-up for you, they should be able to very quickly. I, I would imagine.
I mean, I can go to, you can go to, they have other, uh, Town Livermore has one, I mean, you can go look. I think Saint Alvin's is one. Uh, that they do.
You guys talk to the towns? But China has these, right?
No. Saint Alvin says, um, but. Yeah, so I mean, it's, it's, it's very, in my opinion, you know, let's, you know. Looks like it's doing what it's supposed to do.
Sure.
Yeah.
How often do they update and which responsible for?
We'll be doing in-house.
Basically.
Yes. Yes, we'll, we'll have, we'll be able to sculpt it at just about all of it. Yeah.
You mean the structure or the comment?
I meant the structure, I mean, creating the form, make sure the forms are in.
Hmm, yes.
Calendar and Nancy just.
You got three, yeah, yeah.
Does Google Calendar, will we have on our current website?
I don't think you can put a link to Google Calendar. No, that was something that was added recently and.
If you got, if you got a new calendar, I have a record. And not a, that, but you could grab direct.
So it's thirty-six, thirty-three hundred years, thirty-six hundred, three years, it also. Yeah, and that also includes a, um, uh, it's called agenda, um, and I can pull it up in, um.
I think it's thirty-six hundred dollars for three years.
Twelve hundred a year. Um, but basically what it does is, this is something that I, I, I would like to do because, um, and, and I, I'm sure these other sites would do that as well, um, but. Uh. We're stewards of these records, and if we can scan in the packets, and all the information, the sporting documents that we have here. It's, it's not just in our file, it's out there for everyone to read, so when we have a meeting, I have a variety, you know, I have it, supporting documents about the discussion we're gonna have. And so down the road, you may say, geez, what, what did I do with that? And it's, you know, feel like I'm taking through filing cabinets, we have it all right up there on the website. So you click on the packet from that meeting, and then there you go, there's all the information that we were talking. Um, so that's, I believe that's sixty dollars a month. Um. But again, that, the, the Chris is right with the thirty-six hundred, that include, that would include this module of the change.
We've got a curiosity, where it comes from, like that.
Where's what? I was just scrolling.
And I can tell you the current website is not mobile phone at all.
No, that's also not secure. I, and.
Oh, a, a band, maybe?
Yeah, I think, right. I personally like to, regardless of how we go, thank Laura and, and, uh, the folks that committed to reviewing the, the web. Of our, our process, because frankly, had they not got together some of their ideas, uh, would have been missed, would have been missed. Um. I consistently supported. Town Cloud just. From a financial perspective, we have folks in town. Um. That are socially, economically disadvantaged or on fixed income that are already regularly commenting to us that. Uh, the tax increase that we experienced this year was, um. Something that they're struggling to deal with, or in life. Um. This is a three-year commitment, it's not the end of the world if we go this route, twelve hundred dollars a year, which is about what we're paying David. So there's no real impact to the budget. And if you don't like it. Then we can budget appropriately for a new site, I mean, I, I do agree, I like the revision site, um, I'm from Camden, Camden uses it. Um, I, it's easy to use, but it's twenty-six thousand dollars and. Um. For five, for five years versus three, versus three thousand for three years. So, um.
Twenty-six, for a year?
No, for, for five years total, it's twenty-six thousand.
It's cheap.
We take more, we take David's.
Thousand?
For five years, twenty-six thousand.
It's mean it varies.
That's the basic.
Sorry, so. Revised is twenty-six thousand five fifty. And it's fifty-three hundred a year. Um. Sorry, and Civic Plus is nineteen eight thirty and. Nineteen eight thirty.
Aaron, can you just put up what she's trying to show a little bit bigger, because that's one of that.
Aaron, can you just put up what she's trying to show a little bit bigger, because that's one of that. She's got the different places for people.
Oh, I can't, I don't have that right up in my, I mean, I have it here. But yeah. Um. So, so the number.
So we're also at a, at a crossroads, I mean, we've been, we've been talking with David about how much longer he wants to manage his website.
Yes.
We really have to. Move forward with something, and I agree with Doug that this might be the most logical step. And then, I mean, even if we didn't like it after next year, and we bought the contract out, the bottom of it, two thousand dollars. And, you know, we're moving on, uh, so.
We still.
You know, it's not, yeah, it's not the end of the world, but Doug's.
And I think too, if, um, you know, it's a thirty percent discount, you know. Those are, you know, it's thirty percent on maybe after the terms over, over a thousand dollars, it's still. Seems like pretty good value, I'm very waiting.
That part you're getting. More expensive. If, if you usually get too big. And so functionality that the other ones, you said, visioning some others that were, you know, forty plus percent more than these banks. What do they have that, that you're not gonna get? I think I saw Laura had a list of preparing. And I know that I got together, but show that things were the priorities. They, so there must be some functionality that town cloud is not providing. And if, look at that and say, you know, we really don't need that. Don't anybody's done an assessment, I know, this is, I think it was decided. Yeah, I totally understand us. But are you missing out on some significant? Or did with Aaron's? Were through, is that the?
So I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, that, for me, that's a part, maybe Laura can elaborate. For me, that's a hard question to answer, um, but. I do know this, that there were six areas that were identified that were important. That that panel had identified. And this website addresses them.
Can I make it?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I would say, cause you referenced Constant Contact and MailChimp as equivalents to the email and text alerts. Um, I'm very familiar with Constant Contact, I wouldn't, unless there's some function that I've never used. That's not a real-time subscription-based text alert process, so I don't think that's necessarily an apples-to-apples thing.
What about the other one, the MailChimp?
MailChimp is very similar to Constant Contact, it's what, um, companies use for their email lists. Um, it's more of a, you prepare an ad that goes out versus people subscribe, you know, I wanna get alerts on these specific topics.
You get game, it probably becomes MailChimp, MailChimp is, is uh, probably the most popular one in the world. That, believe it or not, which is cool, oh. What do you want me to call? Um.
Snow tomorrow morning.
One thing I, 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 if I may, um. One thing that I've noticed is, is just listening to conversations with people in town, watching stuff happen uh, online. Is that, and I thought you were just because. The school website has been through so many iterations over the years. And the last one was kind of a pain board iteration, and it's just, we finally sat down and really hammered out. What we were supposed to be doing, because we found that they were part of the website. You know, everybody said, oh, we gotta have this. Okay, and then we put that in there and one person visited over three months, and it would probably be me. Um, so, and also the other thing I thought you were gonna, everybody wants their thing on the homepage. Okay, and so. We took, we had to take a really hard, hard, long look at what it is that people really need, what, what it is that people really wanna go through. And I, you, you've got a list of the things that, uh, people have found important, we're committing to go forth, um. There was a comment that I, that I read somewhere about, uh, um, putting information about, uh, services for teenagers and stuff like that, which is, which is normal. But the town is not a senior services to us. Okay, um, maybe it's too lengthy in there, but if, if you dedicate an entire faculty as a website to. Directing people where to go, when they really could be going to those websites to do that in the first place. Um, there are complete organizations out there that have stumbled on a few of them, to be honest, uh, that list all of those places to go. I guess what I'm talking to you again, if you try to be all thing to all people, you're gonna end up being nothing for most. And, uh, um. You need to really decide what it is that you want, and that's one of the things that if a, if personal website host can do for you, they can narrow it down to, no. It doesn't belong to. But.
The, the three companies we looked at are specifically for municipalities, so they've already kind of done that.
Yeah, that's what I've gotten.
Yes.
That's, we haven't really heard complaints about wanting more from the website, from the general public. The only additions we're getting is things that the committee found and noticed and brought to our attention. So I don't know if that's a good rep, if that, it's six or eight people is good representation of the whole town. As a whole, but it was things that were brought up that made sense or look like good things. You know, add on.
Yeah.
Allie, do you have a question?
When, when we put up one of these, whatever program you decide on, whether it's the town. Cloud or not, really, one of the things that I find hard about trying to understand what's happening in the town. Is that, like, you all see a report, you know, police reports in town, road reports and regularly. And we here in the audience almost never get access to them. So how can we as a public really read, I mean, you're doing our review course tonight, thank you for doing that. But if I wanna review or think about, well, what is really, you know, like, we don't have a sense about, like, what's happening to the police chief, you know, how much, what is he doing, how, you know? So we could get an idea, and if I could go online and just say, somebody wanted to know, how much time does he really spend in a month? Dealing with this X, Y, Z. I could go to a site and actually see the reports. And so I'm wondering whether there's a plan to have, or things like the road reports or. Things like, you know, the, the budget, as we get to the budget, it's very hard to find access to those numbers. Is there going to be a place that we can see those, like before the town meetings or before the support meetings and? Or will they be, and will they be kept in there so we can look back on them?
So, this is, this is what the, this is what agenda is, this is the, the, what I was featured, I was talking about earlier. So if I was to back out here, um. This is kind of what it would look, this, what it really looked like, um. This is a September, so, uh, September seventeenth like board meeting, uh, here's your agenda. Uh, this is kind of what it's, uh, you can click on what he's, Chris did all of this, uh, Chris Heywood did this. Um, you're seeing here, um, what's, what's in the agenda, so this is, this is kind of like an electronic agenda. Now, so here are your draft minutes. Um. Look on that, your minutes, um, you're talking about like reports and things like that. Here's my report that I give in the slide board to just, I'd show people what it is that I'm doing while I'm in the office. Um. And then, uh. So, uh, that, that's the agenda, and then this is the packet that I'm talking about earlier, but that's all this stuff in PDF format that. Is compiled together. Talking about this tactical urbanism here, uh, one of the meetings. So again, I mean, i- it's. It's there, it, it'll be there, that kind of thing, and it's not, well, geez, what do I do with it? You know, with so much paper that we're going through, so. Um. And it's transparent.
This has been a process that we've been really working on. In the last two years, it's just. It's always been an obstacle that's prevented us from kind of getting the ball over the goal line, you know, the, the biggest one is frankly, Mary retiring. We were finally starting to make some progress and. So what we're moving forward to now is, uh, we have to upgrade the infrastructure of the building, it's not capable of handling what we need. Uh, we need to establish some form of website. To replace the one that Mr. Jennings done for us for so many years. And, um. Handle policies that are related to, um. Some of the social media aspects of the town, which we've never had until this year. Uh, so it's, and then, you know, we can't be myopic on just that one. Project either, we have multiple things going on at once, so it's just, it's just. Building blocks to get there and. Hopefully we'll be there sooner rather than later. Well, and the other thing we also, uh, has been kind of missing from this conversation so far is. We've only got four staff. And who's gonna put this data in, who's gonna maintain these lists? The more we add, the more time it's gonna take. And if you got people that are pretty much maxed at their hours, what are they giving up, what's gonna get behind? Or do we have to allocate a temp or additional people to do that, so what we want to add as much as we can. We're also gonna make sure that, you know, how much time are you putting in, for example, that put in a whole bunch of people's cell phone numbers? And to maintain that versus what you get out of it. Not to say that it's not value, it's just the time's gonna come from somewhere, you know, a lot of these municipalities. Are a hundred thousand people. And they've got thirty or forty people working in their municipal offices. So they've got the resources and the bench rate to do that, so that's something we also have to look at and keep in mind with this. Doug in Dallas.
Um, I would just say. Over the last week or so, I, I've looked at. Let's see, five, five different towns. Of which, uh, most of them were pointing these companies instead of. Um. And most of them have that kind of a feature that Aaron was just displaying. Where you can see the agenda, you can see the minutes, that they're gonna. Or if the minutes show up afterwards, that, that. Post, they watermark to the draft, you know, and then, um. You know, they, they packet that goes with it, and some of them were. You know, I mean, you're talking multiple pages, you know, you know what you get, and that's what's gonna be. I thought it was very interesting. That on Winslow's site, which was revised, I mean, yes, um. When you get to look, when you wanna look at the agenda and the minutes and packet. You have to link, they have a link to town file. Get that.
Oh.
I don't know.
It's, it's cause they sell agenda separately, it's a, it's a.
Oh, is that right?
I think it's sixty dollars a month, it's, it's one of their features.
Yeah.
This, the pricing I gave was inclusive, that, yeah, it's again.
I just thought that was interesting.
But the higher priced one is using a town cloud.
Yeah.
Module.
Yeah. Well, the talent is probably because they couldn't get them. It's the image. Dallas, did you?
Yeah, it was. And I think right by my, um, as we were talking, uh, asking about these forms and this update. Is there gonna be able to reveal, see this and that online, who's going to do that? Um. Is this town the road? But I'm in a position where we create another. FTE or part-time. Person solely dedicated to sort of managing the. Data that goes in and out of the website and. I'm all for, all for this, but just kind of thinking, well, what is this, where is this taking us down the road? I think that's, that's a good question, and. Again, if we don't necessarily know what the town wants, is, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we don't know what the town, it's like, is a committee of eight people that. Decided on these six topics. So, not to say anything negative around meeting, meeting members, but being, I'm sure. Sure to decide for them.
I think with Dallas, there's been a Facebook posting. Requesting help on making this decision. And all our names and phone numbers. Were in there.
I got one, David.
It's hard.
Yeah.
That we had only gotten one phone call on the Facebook posting about the town website, yeah.
Got a few emails, but no calls. I, I just, I would like to answer, respond about Dallas was just talking about. Um, I'm confident that we can absorb this in-house as we current. Um, I can't speak to what happens down the road as far as, you know. Uh, positions and things like that, I know we could use some help in some other areas, like, um, in the, uh. On the bookkeeping side of things, we talked a little bit about that. Uh, we were, we did raise nine thousand dollars a town meeting to help with a part-time position. Um, but even with, with, I don't expect that person to even be doing this, actually, I expect that person to focus a little more on the bookkeeping side of it, so. Anyway, I, I feel comfortable that the workload is not gonna put a, 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 a huge strain on the current staff.
Yeah, because, and also because as a department head, I wouldn't have access to a patient, so I'm not looking yet. I think the initial input is where the work's gonna be, because I think maintaining is not going to be the issue. It's just getting other information, because once you have your forms and you're just gonna be updating them. So I think once it's loaded, it's gonna, that's where you work, but maintain it.
So, since, since I've been on the board, Dallas. Um, we've always had some sort of conversation about. How our staff can ease in the flow and the biggest conversation piece that I can recall going back three years now is. Uh, cross, cross training people so that we can enjoy if somebody's out, I mean. Public Works has done a heck of a job this year being down, I mean. A person for most summer. Um, you know, block is filled in when you spend, but, you know, those types of things happen here when. When the town office person's on a vacation or a family tragedy happens. Now we're down to, you know, one person, you know, working the front desk, now you got the bookkeeper coming out of the town manager. Uh, helping out overflow, we want, you know, the highest paid employee in the town office. Doing that, I mean, you know, that's the questions that we're, we have to kind of unravel down the road, but. I agree with Aaron, I don't think, no matter what site we go to. We're gonna see, I see an increase of, of demand for employee, for employee hours. FTE hours, and I suspect they probably have downtime too, uh.
That's why I mean, we can absorb it with the current. With the current workforce we have in here now.
As long as we manage what we put out there, we put a whole bunch of different things out there. Good go, be on the line. Certain things will be time wasters, and I think that's.
I can see with the new system and lots of bells and whistles and, you know, kind of a catalytic version, oh, you know what, now we can do this. Oh, now we can do that. You know, it's time, it could become too much for, you know, existing employees and then go. Even out next year or the next three years, five, ten years down the road, make. And then came one or two more people perhaps manage this.
Dave, did you have something follow up on the initial setup?
Oh, yeah, um, so, one of the ways to review with, uh, one of the, one of the items or miniature, I would say. Uh, with, uh, public records and stuff like that, agendas and all that sort of stuff that we have for working. We don't have to put the agenda on page. We put, we put a link to the folder that contains the agenda. So what happened to our office people, which was often myself, but, uh, it can be deducted in the office, when you type it up for now. Uh, enter the agenda and you type it out, he simply puts it in that folder. Where you can Google Drive, he puts it in that folder and it's now. It's now on the internet. So when you click on the link that says agendas, it takes me to that folder. And we hope that you're smart enough to know that my two, my two thousand twenty-three. Um, agenda is the one that you wanna look for, because that's the name of the file. And you click on it, you open it up and you read it from there, but what happened, what, what it cut down on it. You don't need a webmaster to take that file, put it up on, on the page so that everybody can read it. You can, you wanna see the agenda, click here. And, uh, same thing with minutes. When the minutes are finally approved and go for it, then you get down to that folder and there's no other interaction. It's actually puts it in the folder, it doesn't have to go up, you know. Um, base value on the website, you wanna see the minutes, the last minute, hit there. Um, but. Um, it's. And it really saves a lot of time when it comes to how we start with it, and at one point, I have to admit, uh. We do this, we post everything, yeah. Put it, put it on the website and go for it and get, get here, so key. And, uh, it takes a lot, you need to extend people to where they need to go and you click on it and they open it up and go.
Maybe.
I apologize for my missing. Meetings like this meeting, maybe the basketball, nutrition video and other video meetings can be, will there be a link? With the service on that, on the town website. That's like, that's not.
So you're saying having, when you say a link with other meetings, are you talking about like the?
So both seeing there, or, or, or things that are videos. Coming, speaking, saying. Could potentially be.
But so that's something that we. But so that's something that we've spent quite a bit of time on um over the past few months is. Is how we're going to do. And um I actually, and we're going to talk a little bit about this later in the agenda, but um we have somebody coming out, we're going to start. With the base, so we're going to have somebody come out, look at what we have for our infrastructure here. Wiring, you know, networking, things like that. And he's going to give us a a good look at that. We know that we need to do some upgrades here. I wanted to get a new phone system in here, it actually would save an ounce of money, which is really bizarre, but it was a new phone system. And um. We found out unfortunately that we couldn't do it based on the wiring that's in here. Um, so. Um, that's something that we'll be looking at, um, but the thought is, is yeah, I mean, we're moving towards remote meetings. And and I think that. You know, it's in in we're navigating through the policy, we have to look at policy and things like that. I know people have expressed interest in having. All every committee have this. Connected to the web. So it's not just a. Select board, it's the planning board and whoever is a meeting here in the town office kind of, so. It's out there for everyone, it's recorded, we have a record of it. You could watch from the comfort of your own home, so it's. That's the plan.
Yes, there are two, it's independent of the policy because. I was asking, is is does town cloud have capacity? Linking if if the council decides to, where decides to have these available. For the different committees. Is that functionality within have been to be a great place to be posted? On his website.
Documents go like a pee hole in the smell, they they take a total.
Yeah.
That would not be.
Yeah, I haven't heard that as a concern.
Video, that's a different matter, but uh.
But yeah, but you could link, right?
Yeah, you you would have to start YouTube channel for town and and basically with.
That's all it'd be, if you want to link in there, there you go, it's off to YouTube or wherever.
When we do the school board meeting, we're basically streaming live through YouTube and at the end of the live stream. It's now recorded and kept forever, so you it turned out to be my school channel, so went to my school channel, you could actually pitch. So like, for example, there's a school board meeting on Tuesday night, if you go to the group website. And click on that watch here link. You can watch that Google.
I did.
I like it.
And that's all good on YouTube.
All right. So we exhausted all the comments on this matter? All right. So do we have a motion one way or the other, John? All right, well, I mean, I I've been consistent, so I'm making a motion that we follow the town manager's recommendation for town cloud. Uh, with the uh. Recommendations from the tiger uh committee, yeah.
I'll second. All those in favor? All those pose, all right, Rio.
Right, number five, restabilizing energy communities.
Okay, so. Holly, we talked about this. Right? Like we do have something to talk about tonight, I asked you earlier if we did. So the thought was is that um, you know, so the town, uh, we were successful in getting about ninety-five thousand dollars in grant monies to uh. Raid the. Uh, town office, the fire station and public works garage. With some heat pumps. Um, and there was the discussion about, um, you know, what's it going to look like as far as energy goes and that kind of thing, and. So I understand, Ricky, you were on that board, right?
My dad was.
What he said, okay, okay, senior, okay. Uh, but it was about, it was twenty ten, I think I saw, I was kind of digging around, it looked like it was. Quite a while ago, um. And um having approval available to. Kind of knock these things around as we move forward. With just everything in general, I guess, when it comes to energy conservation is. I know I have a lot of questions um as, you know, about how things are going to progress, starting to share this. Uh, this is my notes, okay?
Okay.
Yeah. No, I I can't, I I, you know, I really would have to have another setup for this, I just wanted to use this for the website.
Okay.
So. We'll get, we'll get there someday, um, but uh. Polly, what do you, you thought of? We talked about this.
The Conservation Commission recommended about a year ago, could have been two years ago, and so confused about the year this is. The um that we think about that the town think about having more. A group of people that you might call the Energy Committee that you can call up when you need to for. Giving you advice about both, I mean, two things, one of them is. Building a plan for how we're going to. What are our energy needs and where are? What is our? Our goals um with both the build mostly around buildings, but also it could be other things like. Electricity for the lights that we're using, but just some group that's kind of keeping an eye on. What's the trends here, where are we losing and wasting money? And what is it that if we want it, if we have the money or have a grant, then we want to have as a priority? And so it's really planning around it, so what happened is. We we had this, we pulled up this group a couple of times, um, the last time it came up, I think they made a decision about. Um, doing the solar, buying into the solar, that whole decision that what are we going to do about, should we have our own solar? Now solar farm or should we buy any of these things? And I think that was very helpful for the town to have a bunch of people who sit down, a lot of them experts in this um. Do it as a profession. And advise me on, I think this is a better way to go because that's why I'm saying.
Yeah.
Um, and there are things like, so for instance, we came up with the resiliency partners that we are, the town now is part of. Is that we're eligible for, we have better eligibility for applying for some grants. And yet, if we just kind of. Quickly, you know, like, oh, there's one there, let's grab it, but if we don't really have a plan on what? What is our priority, or do we really want to? Put in a heat pump here, when maybe what we need to do is put the money first in insulin or putting a new medicine or whatever. And those are the kinds of things that I think that an energy committee might be able to. Better advise people about like. I think that Don Breton made a really good point in his comments on online about. You know, thank you very much, these were great ideas to get these heat pumps in here. What was that the priority and who decided those were priorities and maybe it's not appropriate to put a heat pump in a place that's leaking? You know, we all know that from Energy Efficiency Office that we did. You don't go playing a, you know, heat pump in there, it's got visually leaky windows and doors, whatever. And there's they, somebody does an energy up around your house and says, these are your low hanging fruit, these are the most expensive things, you want to go look at the grants. I think that an energy committee could do that for the town. So that when this thing came up, that they could say, ah huh. Here's what we need to send, you know, put your money in, you can ask for thirty thousand dollars, let's put it first here and there and. So that's just why you thought originally, you know, just to recommend that to the board. It wouldn't be a committee that's. Has to meet regularly, it would just be, they might have an initial function to say. Um, can you look at our overlook and see where we're wasting energy, we're really believing. I know that the school has gone through. You know, that they've been looking at the COVID, how are they going to deal with things with? The uh. Yeah, this this.
Just last night, uh, Tuesday night. The board, the school board, who's the biggest part of it. You liked it to have, what was the name of? It's a full ball, full blown energy audit.
Yeah, full blown energy audit. Everything, everything. But it doesn't cost anything, it doesn't cost enough, but it costs when you get to the other end. I'm not exactly sure how it costs, but one thing, it's it's a percentage of the savings.
Ten to seventeen percent of the total project cost. Yeah. Goes to these consultants.
So I'll just comment on the heat pump thing and then. When we decided. For two years, we've talked about putting heat pumps in this building alone, we have a twenty year old. Cocaine furnace. That. It died twice. Two winters ago and left no heat here. So we pulled it out of the budget. Last time around. And then when the Vassal Historical Society requested for us to assist them in in upgrading their heating system and then the. Efficiency main grants come through. We elected to wait until one of these. Different grants come up to the governor's office or what have you. Um, it wasn't until we applied for this grant that they're like, oh, wait, there's more. And then they.
Yeah.
They went from, you know, thirty thousand dollar grant just to upgrade here to. Here's more money for more heat pump.
Right.
And then we made the decision to just outfit some of the other child buildings, that wasn't our intention going into this.
Um, we took fifty thousand and turned it into ninety-five thousand based on efficiency grant money. Uh, I would note too with this building, um, I have some chairs that hide where the air conditioner is. And straight the wall over here, so it's cooling as well, and and for this building, especially with cooling, it's. I I mean, I think heat pumps will be great, in my office, it's like a salarium. Poor Kathy's freezing because she has a cold vent above her head, so it's. It's kind of balancing that out, but you mentioned the Community Resilience Project. And there's a whole host of things on there, not just heat pumps, but I mean, there's things like E V chargers and things like that, and. And I think as as we move forward. And we start to, you know, um, think about applying for these grants, because. I I've I've been successful twice in doing this. Uh, we're. We should have this discussion, you know, and what is it that we see? You know, what is the vision of this community? And would you like to have things like E V chargers, things like that, so. Anyway, I think it's a great idea, I could use all the help I can get, we're going through this process, it does make things easier as you're buying for grants, they want to see that you're meeting. You know, that you you have input from the community, um, it's not just apply, here you go, it's they want to see that this sort of buy-in from the community.
And that you have a claim. And if we don't have like, even charges are a great idea, we've talked about them in different groups. And it is so complicated, I mean, just as an individual looking at it saying, oh, there's different kinds of E V chargers and there's different races. It really has gotten so complicated from ten years ago when we looked at it. And you need to have those people who can say, you know what, it used to be, you wanted it here, but you know, you got to think about this issue and. People who are on top of that are much more likely to give you the information, you guys who have to make the final decision will be able to do. You know, this kind of thing that that was pulled together with individuals, it's like if you get. A group that's already on top of it, can be watching it and saying, don't just get for E V charters until this is going to. Well, we might not know that. Like, that's why I was, we were recommending that. Is consider gathering a group of, you know, it could only be five people, but people who have some experience in energy.
Do you see this as as an offshoot of the Conservation Commission or?
So I guess what we're looking for tonight is. Is the. The what the board is thinking as far as whether or not they think that's a good idea, and then will we circle back as far as what those names would be to present the board if they're interested in pointing? Is that it, or?
If they're, yeah, if they're interested in in having a committee, then we. That there are some people out there, I mean, some of us know who's on the committee the last time, we can see if they're still interested and then there's new people. First, the board has to decide that they want to have that kind of.
Can we see? The only question I have, it's not really, it's just not, it's just a question, last year, we really started to put more and more committees out there, is it, is it? I mean, how was your time being? Right across being a representative of these meetings.
That went for, well. You know. The hard question to answer, I guess, but. In this particular case, like you're saying, it's not a once a month kind of thing, it's like as needed as they stand ready for to, you know, to have these discussions if we have something. Going on, so I I don't. As far as my time goes, I don't think that's an issue.
Only your Aaron, would this committee just be deciding the municipal? Energy issues for residents of the town.
It is really the uh, uh, look for residential. State already provides that service. Yeah, so we have emotions.
Take a motion or establish an energy committee?
Second. I agree with the change language. All right, all of the favor? All right, Rio. David, are you staying? Longer? Because I I wanted your comments on on our, on central public comments and meetings since you guys deal with it. At the school, so if you were leaving, I'd bump it up, but.
Are you watching the meeting as you?
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna jump to item eleven, the public comments and meetings. I asked her if we put on um as a consideration of. Uh, one of the steps that we have to uh approve. Uh, when moving forward to uh. Streaming. Um, any kind of. Two-way uh meeting. I have some. I'm kind of apprehensive about. About how we proceed with this, particularly with. How cities like Caldwell and South Portland have had some interactions with folks that have. Taken the meetings to a different place than probably what the staff had intended it to be. And I also, you know, I I'm I'm a. A fan and an advocate of having an open meeting, at least volunteer anyways of. People being able to come to the meetings and speak as they want and and discuss their concerns and have a robust meeting. That will change if we have two-way.
Talking about online, talking about, if you know, if you're doing like remote.
Yeah, the hybrid version.
We don't do that.
No, uh, yeah.
It the the way we can knock that meeting. I've been talking to Rick. Look, by the way, I have the room on map, I don't know what you could do.
Okay.
But anyway, um, we're talking. We use TVs. But um, what we have, we have a TV that actually is for the meeting itself. And the only people who are invited to that meeting are the people who are on the board, uh, or the directors. Um, and one of, one of, one of the people who commonly attend, if you look at uh, um, if you go back and hit go. He wasn't after, he wasn't involved in this last meeting, and if we could totally go back, Mike is there, she showed up on the TV screen. Okay? Instead of everybody having, yeah, and they're married. But uh, instead of everybody having your own laptop open and all, with cameras and playing Hollywood Squares. Yeah, I don't know enough from what that is. That uh. Paula showing up on the screen, everybody in person will hit the TV, get an interact, she can see them, they can see her, and they're having an interaction. And uh, uh, it makes it so, she can attend, and remember, she defined that direction for more than just basketball, you had. If she attended all the meetings, she'd be out every night. So it makes it easy for her to do that, and sometimes people didn't care to attend because they're even shit. Or they're out of town or something like that, until they can just remote into meeting and pitch based meeting. That is actually what you're, that group is actually what you're seeing. When you um go and watch one of our school working. You're seeing what our camera picked up. We have a, we have a Google mini system, you're seeing what our, what our camera picked up, but you're also seeing the other people who are. Are remote. So you're seeing everybody in the world, and then there's even the most people, um, so. That is not open to the box. That's by invitation only and put out very reading because there's no vote. And you know, it's kind of like keyboard voice, you know, when they, when they're behind a keyboard. And uh, nobody can see him and so forth, they tend to speak more freely. It isn't always in our best interest. But um. We do have a provision, and it started during COVID, COVID, because we had so many meetings during COVID. It is posted on the website, on my meeting section, and you need to comment on. Uh, on an agenda and so forth, you need to send, send an email or a phone call, one or the other to uh five of them. And uh, so when we get to the public comment section of the meeting. There's actual agenda items called public comment, and they ask, do you have anything in front of the box? Now, uh, if you really want to comment badly, you go to a meeting. And and we take the people to meeting, but very rarely, but uh. Uh, if you open it up, to the double, double problem we have about, hey, you can't guarantee a resident. It could be somebody from Bangalore, you know, saying, hey, I want to join your meeting. How do I know how you do? Whether the police can come in, like who you're letting into that meeting, who you're not letting into that. And not only that, you know, that Hollywood queer thing I'm talking about? You get a whole bunch of them. Um, the one that thing that is nice is that you can control. People who are getting melted. You can hear them, you can kick them off and so forth, but uh. Uh, generally speaking, the idea behind. The remote meeting piece, they started, people can be informed. And see the meeting. Not necessarily uh. Potentially in it. Remotely. Now, the other, the other good thing about doing the remote meeting thing. Now, the other, the other good thing about doing the remote meeting thing is, let's say, for example, you have a lawyer or uh, let's let's just say there's uh, somebody representing a solo company. They quite often have the scheduled meetings around whether or not they can make it. They've been consulted from Portland, whatever this may be. Um, and the nice thing is that when you do have a remote setup, they can remote in. From wherever they happen to be, they can give their presentation on the TV and you can watch it. And you don't have to worry about the whole scheduling meetings around everybody. So that's that's a real great convenience factor. And you know, if we have a COVID outbreak, well, we all can move on.
Yeah.
I feel really strongly about it. I totally understand what David's saying, and I agree. There has to be some. I attend the municipal, you're lucky me. Has to two of the handed facility and. And first you register and it's free, but they know who you are, you know, you're not going to be. And so it'd be anonymous. Secondly, if their meeting is publicized real time. And I can't, their chat session, excuse me, because it's a Zoom. Uh, post uh, posted question. That question, it it is monitored, but there's someone who's monitoring the questions. And it goes through and it's appropriate time. That asks the question or else all the questions go at the end of the meeting. Um, someone reads those questions and they read the question and it's answered by the group. Then that question gets posted and risks identified. So there's a way of trolling what's coming into the session. In in an informed way. Yet still allowing the public to have some input. Because sometimes you want to just not only view the that already did, but then there's something comes up and it's like. I'm sorry, I missed last couple of meetings.
We uh, I know you two have the ability to do the uh, the live chat, but I don't know. I'd have to study that to whether or not it could be moderated. If it can be moderated, then that would work. But um, and again, you know, same situation, people get down, it's one moderator, we're actually. We question key whether or not it's worthy of going up or who's voting. The other thing is that you have somebody sitting there. Um, you know, you you can even put up on the TV screen that uh. If you if you wish to comment, please send an email to blah blah blah, and somebody can be just sitting there. We didn't know the emails real time.
So some of my concerns about having a hybrid meeting is is, you know, just from what the MMA is, is provided us for comments and stuff. We'd have to have stricter in-house conversation. So if we open up for a comment outside of a public comment period or outside of a specific topic, we have to allow. Everybody to have that same access. And. I'm not sure there's a lot of positive in that necessarily in the flow of the meeting. I mean. We can have this two-way conversation because of the way that we've been kind of open about it. And if we go to a hybrid meeting, I think it's gonna be more structured. And I think you're gonna get into a situation where there's technically the board's not obligated to allow anybody to speak at these meetings outside of a public hearing. And. So. That shouldn't, we shouldn't have to, I don't want to change that. I want people to be free comment, comment what they want to say.
I guess I'm not understanding the distinction between whether, I mean, I. I've been right. Trust you with a question. Whether I'm in the room or not, you still have an opportunity not to answer the question.
Right, but we still have to have a moderator. And there's four of us and town manager is responsible for being. No, I I'm not trying to say, yeah, but I'm just, but I want to get my concerns out here as we go through these next step and. Maybe uh, Rick or or uh, Mike has something to say.
I I think probably the best thing is we were given the MMA policy on the meetings. And ironically, it seems to be very similar to the legal advice we were given by our attorney. On having like a Facebook presence. So I I guess the biggest thing is for people to look through there. Understand what it is. So to better understand the questions, because it's it's. I mean, if you open it up, there's a lot of different rules for engagement and you're gonna be an attorney to figure it all out, it seems.
Anybody know about the camp? Much, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that's different though, because the difference with COVID is because you didn't have an annual public. You couldn't have a positive, but now are they?
Other towns do it and they have a whole set of rigid protocols that they've put out ahead of time. And been pre-approved by their attorneys or MMA or. Both.
I guess if you were going to go that way, you'd have to go that way.
Yes.
Like it says right here, it's helpful to establish reasonable time limits for each speaker, for example, three to five minutes. Dave, you're up. For the entire comment period, so. Be more regimented, I think that's great for that.
Speaking and asking a question, you know, just taking it in is a whole different thing, not going to pontificate. And asking me what. I'd say, well, how much does this cost? For anyone. This gave a question like that, I don't think it should be that threatening. Doesn't seem like that inappropriate thing where there's someone's calling in for on the conference call. Writing and. I just think that kind of engagement is important. You know, a lot of people. Don't come to the town. Also, it'd be nice to have. stage involved, either just listening, which could be done on the YouTube page and. But anticipating. Um, I reached out to a friend who lives in China and they use some.
Yeah, talk to Becky about that. She.
She was recommending to us.
Anyways, that's just an idea, but that's open. So China must have had. Deal with whatever. liabilities there are with public hearings and.
I think it's just the structure. Of changing how we do the meetings. I mean, personally, I don't want to change. You'd be able to have this two-way conversation with the board at a meeting. If we go to a headbread meeting, I'm gonna advocate that we do. And that things are structured so that if you're at home and you have a question, you have the same opportunity to sneak as Doug or anybody else.
He's scrolling through what? Up to number nine for?
No, I'm not worried about necessarily about. A lot of people trying to inundate. It's it's just a matter of having to give everybody the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, that that I can see what happens coming into, if you make it, if you make it so easy for people to. I'm not saying you shouldn't make it. Please understand, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to silence people. But if you, you know, it it takes a little bit of effort to come to a meeting like that. Um, if you feel strongly about something, you come and you speak about it. If it takes no effort, fifty people show up in the online meeting. And then technically, you gotta let those fifty people speak. And then the meeting goes on forever.
I guess that's what I'm saying is is the hybrid model can have a little different accesses. Dave's saying, if someone is really passionate about it and they want to get up here and verbalize exactly what they need up in the meeting. But this way I can still, I'm online, I can still ask some questions. That I hope you guys address or not, we can look into it later, whatever it is. And it's it's not me. You know, it's just giving more access to more people.
So you're saying not necessary. If I'm speaking out loud, you know. Um, are you saying not necessarily giving people FaceTime, but uh, having somebody sit there and, you know, an email comes in? Hey, someone has a question about that, da, 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 da. They're gonna hear the answer, by the way. They're they're probably watching how they knew to ask a question. So it's not like you have to answer from that. You're basically saying, don't go want to know about uh, you know, whether or not you grow long grass on, you're supposed to go and answer the question. Um. You know, obviously, if a dumb email comes in, you know, I'm talking about some, uh, I'm like, I don't know. Ignore that and uh. So that's uh. So one thing in public participation, that's more like if somebody's done with a comment. But that's much more manageable. Uh, the only other thing you could do, and I don't recommend this, um, is that. Google Meet and towards Zoom and all of those have the capability. You can put out a link. And then maybe basically everybody stays in a waiting room. Okay, until the the uh moderator, whatever administrator, whatever left them in. And then you do their things and they could talk and you would. And then when they're done, they get kicked off and uh, the next person can do it. Oh, and nobody can do it.
That's what I'm doing right now. I have it on Zoom. I have the remote mics muted so that pe- people want to. Ask a question, they can comment here. And then I can read it out loud, but nobody can talk. It was turned off. They have a way.
So one thing I know the school does is. People are supposed to email their questions to the superintendent before the meeting, and then he answers them. We talked about question at vassabro.net. That people could pose a question out there. Whether it be something to get an individual answer back, or it's something that warrants answering at a town at a at a select board. Board meeting or something. So that was, that's kind of how they allow some public access. Even though they're not let into the meeting per se and.
You know, we have nobody here. We have two hundred people.
But having that kind of hybrid meeting where it gives something in, not necessarily. Um, and I think there's there's a real advantage. I mean, I have like six questions I want to ask. And Karen's presentation answered them. You know, if ten of us have the same question and Aaron could have to answer the same thing when that's part of his presentation. There's value in letting you guys. Present what it is and maybe probably presenting why we need an energy meeting and then responding to. I I just, I think that's out of the game.
And there's also the fact too, we talked earlier about how old the population is.
Um, I know Winslow in Waterville uses that crossroad TVs, I believe it is. Do they allow for public comment on their meetings? They do?
He says yes.
But. Yeah, a certain town to the north of us, which would be on need. When people want to talk. On something that is not on the agenda, yeah, give them three minutes. Yeah, and that includes the response from the council.
Right, three minutes total.
Three minutes and you're gone.
Or did you add finish your comment?
I was just saying about people not attending meetings. It's not necessarily disinterest. A lot of people. Can't drive at night. Things like that, you know, accessibility issues that. Might prevent them from being here.
I don't know what the thing that was posted on the um, the last meeting. Is that an example of this? What was it? There was a, it was recorded, the last meeting, the last select board meeting was reported. We could watch it.
That's me just as a citizen reporting me.
And one of the things that I've seen with some meetings is that the recordings are. They're they're almost useless, uh, because you can't hear. The comments from people who don't have the microphone. Or you can't see like. Something that they're referring to, a piece of paper or that thing. And you just, and you're just kind of going clueless and you kind of, it's not easy. So a lot of it will depend, you know, people using access of this town firm. Will depend on how good it is and how much can people. I want to hear the comments when I'm, you know, otherwise I don't know what's going on when. Somebody like Laura is making a comment. So it's like, that has to be a very important part of. We really want to truly include people. It's not just making these decisions about what you believe with. How actual. It's how much can they include it?
I'm gonna comment, I'll get too deep. And and one of the things that I'd like to see with any kind of policy change, once we start recording then, was to have a designated spot. Where people come to to comment so that the camera's fixed, there's a microphone, we're able to control the environment of where they're at. So you know who's talking and what they're saying clearly.
So our November meeting, we're gonna have a demo. Uh, I think it's Public Com Studios. Cameron software, which is designed to do something like this. How it's gonna work, I have no idea. We have a network engineer that lives in town that's gonna donate the system and the time to set it up. And we're gonna see how it works. And I mean, we're working our way through this. We want something that works. Um, and it's not a simple, you know, process, obviously.
I mean, Mike, they've been talking to me about it quite a bit already. And uh, you know, what what we do with Google and with our Google meeting system. And uh, uh, the network engineer that you will talk to. Keep the bomb, who knows, who knows?
I actually had a um, town hall meets demonstration that I reported or had them report. Did it virtually that I provided to the select board. If anybody would like to watch that demonstration, I'm really happy to share it. Essentially, though, they put a camera in the corner and they put microphones in the ceiling. And it's a one-way conversation. It's not like Zoom, there isn't any, any ability to. Interact, you're you're just watching.
One more quick comment. The video thing has nothing to do with capital. Yeah, that completely off the top of the head. It uh, they don't, the website don't post video. That could be a YouTube channel or something. Network and I don't know what it is and so forth. And so it's the only thing that would happen on that platform, there would be a link. You know, collecting data and so here.
I think people are crossing towns, all streams and town flowers, the names.
I'm glad the work done.
I I appreciate Dave coming in with your expertise and uh, coming in from the school's perspective. Um, it's good comments for everybody and and something for us to continue to work toward on. I think we probably. Continue on this as we progress. Alright. We're gonna move on to town office upgrades. Thanks, dude.
Um, so I talked a little bit about it earlier, um. Uh, we have somebody coming in next week to look at. What we have for the, you know, for the. I guess the infrastructure, you'd say, as far as wiring goes, networking. He's gonna look at, you know, how how fast our systems are and this kind of thing. Again, I'm not a techie. Um, that's why he's gonna come in next, next week to. Take a look at that, though. Understanding it's free consultation.
Any comments on that? Alright, we're moving on to review the fire station roofing bids.
Okay, so you have two bids in your packet. So we got uh. Fowler's fifty thousand. And Whitney go for a hundred thousand.
What did it cost to paint?
Engage metal.
Forty-five to paint.
Yeah, I think it was forty-five to paint, or as little Fowler said, uh. Anyway, um, you have two bids. I've received two bids. There you have it.
So what was the warranty on the uh?
Ten years on both.
Workmanship. The metals.
The metal.
Probably longer.
The metal's ten years on both bids. They don't.
So we can paint for forty-five thousand and get a one-year warranty or replace the roof for fifty thousand and get a ten-year one.
Or we leave it. How long will it last unpainted?
Yeah, it's really, is that an aesthetic thing?
Aaron, I I sent you an email just like this, with pictures, maybe to pull it up for. Okay, hold on, I'm sorry. We'll get there.
Do you want Mike's computer too?
Well, yeah, that's that's it. Uh. They set up a drawing. Is this Whitney? Uh, no. Oh, that's it. Yes, that's why you did, yes. Yeah, so I know, um, the biggest concerns that we we had seen was along the bridge caps there. Um, and then the creases where the the two roofs meet. And then obviously the backside around the chimney where it's rusting and. Oh, yeah. I mean, it's been there for thirty years, um, or thirty-three years, and unfortunately, the warranty on it was thirty years.
Yeah, I know the new stuff's only ten.
What's that?
And the new stuff's only got a ten-year warranty?
Uh, is that, is that what it was for the? For the new roof, the twenty-four gauge is ten-year warranty.
That's the labor.
It's been with everything. Labor's always different to.
I'm trying to have Fowler's clarify. Fowler's offers a ten-year labor warranty. Um, and direct sales metals warranty is noted on bottom of the agent T, tell her about her.
I don't see page two, so.
I think I got, oh, that's cause it flipped twice. That's Fowler's.
Um. So when did they plan that we were to vote on this? When did they intend on?
When they plan on what time?
Oh, I just saw Everlock is a twenty-five year.
Is that James?
Yes. Think there was a twenty-six gauge.
So they were just the smaller, the lighter, the twenty-three.
Well, there's six.
It's lighter.
So we have about. Ninety-four thousand dollars left in our fund.
Yeah.
Same, we have earmarked. In that funding for the reeves. So. If we're gonna do anything. I'm in favor of replacing, we feel we're paying it.
Yeah.
But what do you guys think is the downside of doing? No, cause it's upper funding. Is, do we, we have any recommendations from uh from Fowler's that we could call or?
I can, I can, I can, I just question, I. Yes, absolutely, I can, it's, I can awesome or recommendation. References.
Yeah, we'd like to do, and uh, I can do that. Maybe we just could get some references and then for Fowler's and then uh. Um, consider getting clarity on what the warranty is on the material.
I gotta say that, I mean, the older roof is probably pretty solid other than the aesthetics. And and even though it's thirty-some odd years old, I would, I bet it's gonna last as long, if not better than the new one would. And I'm just, I'm wondering if it makes sense to to change the roof out for the looks. If it's performing. And the life, I guess I would ask the question, is it performing? Are there leaks? How thick is the metal? Is it gonna rust through or is it gonna last? It's not like a car that's under the salt. It's up in the air, it gets rain on it, I mean. Uh, and there's a lot of old barns in town that have roofs that are. Seventy, eighty years old, and other than the barn settling. The roofs are fine, so I, you know, other than the aesthetics of it, I've got to question the performance. And is it worth? The aesthetics.
I don't know if this will help, but the library actually had an issue recently. I don't know if you knew about that. Um, one of the screws. Something had gone wrong with that and water did get in and did start to.
Now, this is the stuff that's indestructible.
Well, I mean, it's. Walker looks like he might have something to say.
Do you know, leaks or anything, Walker, or anything?
Um, I haven't seen nothing inside the building. I've been up on a ladder and looked up at it. And then physically bent on top of the roof. Um, I don't know if Fowler's or. Their company, if if they've been up there, whether. You know, did, did they have any comments about it and? That was gonna be my second question. Was that for a standing T metal roof or?
Now, they're both, they're using this, it's a new system they have. It's like a double lock metal roofing system where it kinda flips in.
Awesome.
Kinda thing. The old ones, they used to run a machine up it and zip it. Um, so, um, but it looks, it looks, both systems looks similar, I would say.
Um, and you know, if if we do wait it out to see, you know, what happens with the roof, I mean. I personally don't get up there every six months to check it, so if something does happen. Chances are, we probably won't know until water comes down through the, through the ceiling, so. Um, and I'm not a building contractor either, so. I'm not sure to say whether if it's good, how much longer it's gonna last, et cetera, et cetera.
So we're looking at doing. Sixty or a hundred thousand dollars on a roof because it's peeling and we haven't even inspected to see. What the condition of the roof is. It started with, it looks crappy, we wanna paint it, make it look good, geez, it's forty-five grand. Let's look at this. I'm gonna say, is there any harm in going back and finding somebody can do a roof inspection? To see what the integrity of the roof is, but the longevity of the roof is. And then we have to make a decision, is it worth putting this much money or aesthetics if it's gonna be solid?
Right, no, I, I agree one hundred percent and I, like I said before, I think the biggest concerns, bridge caps on top. Um, and then where the two roofs meet and then. Um, it's around the chimney where it crosses out, you know, I don't know how.
Ridge cap was cheap. Yeah, there was a ridge cap coat that was relatively inexpensive compared to the whole cost, which you just could do a ridge cap and here again, an inspection. Right, find that.
Agree one hundred percent, yeah. And like I said, around the, in that bottom picture there, around the chimney. You know, I I am confident that the the rust is coming from the chimney itself, not the roof. But. You know, what's the deal there? Is anything that happened?
Do an inspection in the back, yeah.
May, may I ask, is it sheven under that roof?
I have.
I believe so.
I would also need careful. If somebody breaks the roof. And then they determine some of the sheven's there. Then you're going to be out.
They've addressed that in the quote, that, replacing if they have to. Yeah.
So I, I think, I think your comment was. Was really well thought out, having an inspection done to really get. A good assessment of what you can.
I see a lot of old barns in town, that, that's why I did a metal roof.
Yeah, I have a suggestion. Yes, I can get somebody like CEO Beck. Get somebody over here, cause they're experts, they did this. And in my room. To go up on that roof and say. We need something now. Just buy him a five gallon bucket of tar.
I don't have an issue one way or the other, what we do.
And they'll probably do that. More money.
My position is this. This isn't anything that's impacting the property taxpayers in the town.
Yeah.
If we do nothing, that money needs to be spent this year on some other project, which is fine. Right, but we're almost at the end of twenty-three, so we have to have that money committed by October of next year. So I don't have a problem doing our due diligence, figuring that out, but. I'm doubtful, you know, down the road that. Uh, it's just gonna be a capital expense. Coming out of property tax money, so. Um, that's my only thought process with with moving forward, but.
I'm just a little surprised that we only got two bids. I, I just don't know what I'm processing, I mean. Are we? You know, we're just putting RFPs out there and waiting for people to jump on it, with the phone calls and say, hey. Like you to bid on this project, and someone would probably gonna tell you they can't do it in the spring any. But at least you get. Some people respond, I mean, you know, like you mentioned Beck. You know, I'm totally shocked that they wouldn't submit a bid.
There probably enough business going on with the staff they have.
Mitchell, I'm, I'm surprised that they wouldn't submit it. And they can do it in the winter. Yeah, yeah, you did my roof in January. No, they, they can, it's not like. I, I just, it's, it surprises me that you got two bids and they're so far.
Yeah. That's, that's why I'm interested in references.
One, one currently doesn't want to work. Or the other one wants it so bad, they're gonna cut.
Yeah, I still have the newest stuff, I have to question the quality of the, the old seams. It's working. As far as we know.
Sorry, I'm gonna die.
I'm sure we can find other, other places, use the upper funds, it's just if not more.
So is it, will we uh move before to try to get a uh an inspection of the?
Make a motion for an inspection.
Sure, alright, others please. Fire primary request to purchase appliances.
Yes, um. No, uh, we need a new refrigerator at the uh, the Riverside Station, that was dual one. Um, and then the oven that we have at the North Station, I believe it may be the original. Maybe it was Tommy's childhood oven, but. Can't seem to find buyers or anybody that wants to work on it. Um, so I just, I was looking to see if the select board would consider. Spending twenty-five, approximately twenty-five hundred dollars uh in our funding for place the refrigerator at Riverside. Station and the oven at the North Station. And I got prices for. Um, both the refrigerator and the oven from several places. Uh, they, for the refrigerators, we replaced what we have there. Was right around between fourteen hundred and sixteen hundred dollars. And then the electric oven, you know, I don't think we needed anything too crazy, uh, that was anywhere between five ninety-nine, seven hundred bucks. And I did find. Um, I went to Lowe's, Home Depot. Portons. Steve's Appliances. And I did find something that. Portons, you bring your client's quote, they'll match the quote. Um, I personally would like to shop local. To have it serviced. Be able to have a service, person buying, nothing against Home Depot or Lowe's, but. In dealing with somebody right down the road would be a little bit easier. So I was just looking to see if this luck board would consider.
Wa- Walker brought this to my attention and I asked him to come on. To bring this up, I'm supportive of it, I mean, these are, I think this is the perfect example of what to use the upper funds for. So I personally in favor of. Chief's recommendation. Yeah, you know it.
Walker?
Yes.
You ever heard of scratch and dent as a source of major appliances?
Scrudge and.
Scratch and dent, if they're not perfect, you get a big reduction in the cost. Function out, you know. Usually scratches on the side, who cares? Those, those facilities are out there.
Right, so like it has, it it would be cheaper. You know, if it has a scratch or dent on it, but it still works.
Yes, our factory refurbished sometimes, it's something that got returned and refurbished.
Who would that be for?
The, the one in firing the other closed shop, where my major, they just went out of business. Hey, I. I. I like you said it, Mike. Uh, I also agree with. With uh Walker as far as going through Fortons, if it's a problem.
You gotta get this service, they are good on services, true. I'm fine with it.
What's the criteria for the after funds? Uh, usage?
It's really up to us, the townspeople gave us the authority to spend money.
Needs to be.
It became extremely lax. Basically, just. They find a way to spend it. It was very. It was four modules when it first came out. And then as time kinda progressed, you know, moved on, it was, it got very lenient.
And there's a deadline.
Yes.
Which is.
And it's next year. We have to have it.
Yeah.
By next year, instead of twenty-two and six. And it can't be used for. Um. Budgetary items, like we can't offset a normal budget item with that line, that's why restrictions.
My only. Comment is that. You know, I want you to, I would prefer. That you keep track of this pretty tightly because I'm really still advocating, I think it's. We put a generator down. And. You know, looks at twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Did you get those?
If you go with a high roof bid over here, you're gonna eat up that.
You may not, but I, you know, you may not do anything to the roof, you know, it's just.
Well, I understand.
And a lot of money for generate.
And the ninety that's left theoretically, it's already considering that was. An X, X amount of money was set aside for painting room.
Uh, we got two bids for painting the roof, one was fourteen thousand. And one was forty-five thousand.
Yeah, but you had an amount already allocated in your upper funds for that painting of the. It was considered originally, I just don't know whether you.
Double check.
I'm looking at twelve thousand dollars to get a generator to put in here, so if you're gonna operate. Somebody from the town office can get certain people.
Although, well, we operate remotely from home.
Somebody's gonna be here.
I'm thinking about, um, why, why does.
We do different events, I mean, they're gonna be hosting a uh. Fundraiser for the school this upcoming month, you know, there's various different things that they do. Uh, the community. You know, I think they talked about going back to doing different fundraisers at some point, I don't know, I can't speak for what they do, they're not the profit. Um, but. You know, uh, it's a small price to pay for. What little they get paid to be available, as far as I'm concerned, they want stove. And it keeps people around the fire stations. Twenty-five hundred dollars is cheap money. Now, that's my opinion.
So it's used as a sort of a. A uh. To continue to serve, to make it so that it's a, because there's service to the community. It's not for specifically. A, a function, but they need to have one. You know, the school meets, you know, and, you know, we looked at the school. And I was shocked that the school didn't have a really a functioning kitchen. They have a warm-up kitchen. They warm up food and stuff like that. They don't have a cooking kitchen. You know, and I was shocked, it was like, cause we, I thought, oh, can't we get a bunch of food there and we can process it, we can. Take farm food and process it there, and they said, no, I understand our kitchen is a place where we get food from places and we. You know, we do the, it's, you know, it's not really a cooking, it's not a cold kitchen.
It's a commercial kitchen.
It has a commercial license.
Yeah.
But it's not set up to be able to do the kind of mass cooking. And so it's just an example of sort of like, where do we? I just wanna make sure that we're thinking through, you know, what is the purpose of it? It sounds like this purpose is really just to. To, to basically make a comfortable. Place for people who are volunteering as well as to have a place that they can be fundraising. And that there's not other options for. Is there some other?
So there's, there's, that is a fundraising option, um, also. Like the October twenty-seventeen storm. People lose power for two weeks, they can come to the station, get warm, cook some food. Have a refrigerator. Nolly that, refrigerator is more so. We have waters in both our refrigerators, so when you go to a structural fire. You know, the guys are drinking warm water while they're there that is on the trucks, but when they get back, they can open the refrigerator, get a full bottle of water. Or any other color. So it's multi-purpose, really. For a little bit of everything. So, and like I said, uh, like Chris said, we have the Hunter's Breakfast. Uh, on November fourth. Coming up. Use that for food.
Do you guys bring your own lunches when you have all-day trainings, keep them in the fridge?
Um, so we do that, the, the drinks from the trainings, um, those will go in there as well. We have the mandatory training that we have. I just. I think it's good, the guys volunteering their time, you know, to be able to feed them and also give them a full drink.
Like an employee kitchen, basically.
Right, I mean. Right, I mean, it's not, uh, the the Riverside Station, um. That kitchen's a lot bigger. Uh, but it's just has the basics, I don't even think we have a microwave down there, that's the oven. Same refrigerator. And then the north has. Microwave oven refrigerator.
Running the move on that, Eric. You have a motion?
Make a motion for the funds that he's requested for fridge and stuff.
To be purchased by Portons.
To be virgin by forties, yeah.
Be twenty five.
Up to twenty five hundred. All right, so we have a motion. To authorize uh purchase at Portons, such twenty five hundred dollars. And that's second on favor.
Mike second. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
All right, number nine quarterly finance report.
Okay, um, I got some numbers for you, uh, we were able to get these budgets entered. Afternoon, so after working with the auditor. Um, so now we're on on a path towards. Not getting. Regular updates for department heads moving forward. Um, we're about one eighth overall, about twenty percent over, uh, skip a twenty eight percent spent. Um, which is seems to be right since it's first quarter. Nothing really stood out, um. And that I can see, I just wanted to make sure that you had your expense number for you. And revenue. Uh, as well. Revenue's looking good, um. Our excise is. We're about a third. Third of the way collecting our excise, it looks like. As far as comparison, so it's budgeted. So yeah, um. We have our TIF payment entered as well, ninety four thousand, eight forty four. And. I overall things look well, um. Looking for questions. I can try to get you the answers through trio.
Where's the uh, the administrative line, number thirty unclassified, why is that overextended?
By how much?
Eleven thousand.
Okay, so that's. That she did a journal entry for that. Oh, you're looking, I'm sorry. She, we did fix that, there's a journal entry that was made there to bring that back up twenty five hundred. Um, that was from the hydrants. Uh, and we didn't know, I think what happened at the time, I think she just looked at. Didn't know where to get, they should have. And, um, so you'll see under utilities thirteen three dash three, hydrant rental. There's twenty four thousand eight forty for that. Uh, two, two of those payments are fifty five hundred dollar payments hit that, so there's been a journal entry, that's been correct.
So that must be all kind of that water district, so we pay the god. They every month.
Yeah. Yeah, that's that's what that is, in the water district, um. So those two payments hit that line, you said fix that.
Is that the biggest reason why you're at twenty eight percent or?
Well, I think that's our, that's correct, and it's, all we did was move. That's the legitimate spends. Um, twenty eight percent is where we're at. Yeah, but figure we're, that's including October. So. Figure we're past the first border already in in Denver. So that seems, seems good, I know that paving. Right, so there, uh, with paving, um. Uh, the numbers came in lower, which was great, saved by about a hundred and forty thousand. Um, you know, done, savings done. Um, there'll probably be a discussion later on about. You consider maybe doing more paving, but we can talk about that at a later time, it's. Springtime, uh. So, um, that was, that was a pleasant surprise.
You know, off the top of your head, what asphalt's running right now with ten?
I was gonna say, I thought it was in the eighties.
That's it, um, Mike, any questions, concerns?
Rick. Budget sixty five and we're only fifteen into a quarter of the way through the year. Ten.
What was the question?
Is everything been recognized as a debit? Or the things outstanding?
I'm sorry, I didn't read.
He wants to know if everything's debited, it's like it on rec. Or is there anything outstanding based on the line?
So you still got fifty thousand. And 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 spent.
Yeah, you're doing real well, sure.
Cause you're not seeing any credits there yet, right? The external fees.
Oh, so your revenue and expense are like two ships in the night, they don't. You won't see that. Um, we actually had a discussion, um, with the auditors about that, and. With Karen, um, so essentially, um. We've been advised by the auditors, uh. Uh, these, those revenues that are generated, that's the work that she's doing, fundraising, the setup is restricted revenue. My understanding is the path and the way. In the past. Um, it's been, um. Oh, we're we're right now, we're holding that money as liability, which is affecting our balance, our balance.
Negative asset.
Right, and and so it's it's not the correct way to do it, um, I've, you know, I've had concerns about that for quite a while now, we did get clarification on that. Um, so, um, that's basically what we're going to do, something, you know, the governing body or legislative body needs to do. This is kind of behind the scenes with the nuts and bolts and working with trio to set up those accounts. Um, so, um. I'll be meeting with Karen about this, so she's asked about, you know, the the this this revenue that's been brought in and, you know. How she can use that for her program, and so. Um, it's been, it's been past practice that you're able to use those revenues, it's again, it's just, it's in in the backend of things and how things were. Plugged in to the uh financials, the financials, uh, statements or stuff. Yes. So, um. So we're quite excited, we got verification on that five minute.
And it has to be recognized as received.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rick, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good with that.
No, I just wanted you to have these numbers before you, next time we need, you'll get these well in advance, so you can. Digest them a little, little easier than.
All right, so we love to tip.
Uh, I just wanted to get the process before you, um. We've been bouncing around here, so I'm gonna. It's taking with handout that gives you the, um. The guideline for how we move forward with that, uh, as I've spoken. Do about earlier, legislature has changed that, how do you use those funds? You can use up to fifty percent of your fifth municipal buildings. Um. And so we talked about the process and getting that. Uh. On the, um. Uh, getting a public hearing, we need to publish notice. We need to hold at least one public hearing, publish notice of the hearing at least ten days before the date of the hearing in a newspaper of general circulation. And at the hearing, the legislative body of the municipality or plantation considers. Whether the Moses District or Development Program was contribute to the economic growth or well-being of the municipality. Um, and so. That's, that's kind of the. The process, um. The, um, I was. You know, I I was talking to the Department of Economic Development Community, uh, Community Development about this and. Uh, you know, I mean, my thought was to just, you know, reference statute when you're looking at this ordinance, so we don't have to keep going to, i- if it changes, we don't have to keep going to it. You know, uh, public hearing and go through this process again. There, even though the statute referenced how, you know, there's. Quite a bit in what you can use this for, they're kind of looking what the, I guess, the flavor of what. You are thinking as far as using these funds, they don't want it to be this sort of broad stroke as. As far as what the, you know, what the statute says. So, um. So anyway, um, that's something to think about between now and then is, you know, what do you want, how, what do? How do you want to use these funds and, um, and we we have the timeline in front of us here. Think about that as we move forward.
Go ahead, Mike.
Does. Do you just say that we can ignore our own ordinance?
What's, what's that?
No. He's explaining the process of what we have to change it.
We have to modify.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And it's due when February.
Uh, I think it's, this February first. It does say that in this handout. Uh, but it it actually does, it is February first, it's, yeah.
I'm seeing this as a. Source of significant funding for the dump. Project. I mean, it's huge. We're gonna run out of effort. We still have to go to the town.
I think it's just a little what changes we want to make and be prepared for when we go to the public care.
This was the key word on his application.
Yeah.
Just keyword.
Yep. Yeah.
Are there any other, I mean, this has been a hot bus issue to you for a couple of years, I think, so. I mean, uh.
It's surprising he's not saying more.
I mean, I guess we need to be prepared for. What it is that we. I don't want to reopen it again, I mean, it, you know. Like to be prepared moving ahead so that he can write the language on that.
There are plenty of examples up there in town of Madison. But deep done from their original.
It'll be interesting to see how things develop based on the change of the legislature.
Do you have to specify that in your ordinance, or that's just consideration? Where is the consideration where it gets used? That, yeah, wide open after the fact or?
No, that's, that that's what I was talking about, it's like, I I kind of just want to just reference statute, say. Here you go, as reference in statute. This is what we can, you can pick anything that you like, uh, the person I spoke to frowned on it, said when the commissioner goes to look at this. May not necessarily, that that's not the way they like to do things is. I don't understand, I mean, why not, if statute allows you to do it, but. They have. Absolute input as far as how we move forward with this, so.
Is there anything that dictates what you have to do after, let's say this, this goes to town meeting? So, is there something that dictates how the board has to renew each? Project?
The the board has the authority to spend the money without going to town meeting.
Right.
Very, yeah. But there are only six allowed categories right now. In. Property.
Yes.
So it has to be building the property. But there's nothing, you have the discretion after that. Once you can use it for municipal use, fifty percent of it.
But we have to change the ordinance. To do that.
Yeah.
And we gotta get state to approve our ordinance language before it goes to the vote. Yes, but we have to have the request into the state before March first, or February first, or what have you, so we have to. Have a public hearing. Probably January at the latest.
Yes.
So that makes some changes to the document. Um, I mean, I. I'm not as this. Out on this issue as Mike is, I mean, I I'm fine with. Just changing the changes so that we can use the money to upgrade to town, it's just sitting there, I mean, right now. Uh, really, it's the money billing. Yeah, a couple hundred thousand dollars in there. And, um, essentially.
The ordinance won't specify transfer station.
The law just changed. I'm I'm sorry if I'm not, if I'm misunderstanding your your question.
No, I I I just, you're not gonna put specific projects or.
So.
Safety.
So, yeah, I mean, I think that's kind of what we're talking about now, I was thinking about what it is that you want in there, I mean. Again, the legislature opened it up, fifty percent of these funds can be used for municipal building. So municipal building. Yes. Buildings is my understanding. And I was mistaken on the deadline, it's March first, not February first.
And then use that towards purchase of the fire.
So if we use fifty percent of what's in there. Towards the transfer station, if it's to get support, then. That'd be. A big pull. Especially, I mean, right now, I think, I recall from the last time I looked at the TIF. Um, essentially, the only thing that's left that we could really take action on is if a business in town wanted to take a loan out. Or access funds. We did mention that. All right, anything else on that, any other questions on the TIF?
So you said also in that it's to be contributed to the well-being of this. That's pretty broad.
So. I I'm just, uh, as far as the updated legislation goes, it's LD two eight six, says you can use TIF revenues, spread for fifty percent. Capital cost for renovations or any project in municipal building. Uh, or services housed in the facility must be related to general economic bill. So, that's. That's subjective to me, but.
So nothing about well-being.
Um. I I'm just talking about the recent change in legislature and the legislature, I can. I mean, I can study, I'm gonna sign you up. Go through the statute if you like, um.
That's okay.
As far as I can look for that, but I mean.
We've got until February.
Right, yeah, yeah.
We have to get the application before March first, right? So.
So doesn't mean I can use this for any program. But programming, well-being and.
No.
Yeah, well-being. Of inhabitants. So it says, so it could be everything from fire and. Related to. The kinds of stuff that we do or, you know, senior exercise programs and stuff like that.
That's here. If I do employment opportunities, improve around the tax base, Bruce General, company of the state.
And this is also just the opening volume to you, Holly.
I I get, I'm just trying to, I'm thinking ahead. We're talking about safety, one of the things we're looking at is whether, I mean, there may be. Some amount of money we're gonna get from grants, but, um, also looking at. Moving the safety at our villages. Best friends and traffic, things like that, they call it money, and if we can use someone just. Putting in those things, we just got it designed yesterday, actually. Putting in those things, we just got it designed yesterday, actually. The DOT around some. Temporary designs for improving safety. And there's some branch from DOT if we follow some of those designs and try them. So I'm just looking at thinking, oh, well, then when we look at, you know, some of the.
Those are state aid roads, can we do that on the state aid road?
That's what we were, that's why the DOT has this new program. That they, they work with the town municipality to. You develop temporary, put in what you think you might want to do temporarily. And then if you prove that it actually makes a difference in terms of whatever your criteria is, and our piece slowing speed down. But actually slow speed down through these different things, then they are more willing to be a team than look with the municipality saying. You know, yes, we will, when we come through here, we will put. Incorporate these into.
Well, it's all worth considering, Holly, I mean.
I'm just looking out saying, okay, you know. In the future, if we decide that it's the safer way to go and the town has to put out an extra. Thirty thousand dollars to do this, then it can come from some. Particularly if we're trying to keep. Businesses, multiple businesses.
So the, they really talk about it in general terms in the website. To promote economic, economic development, provide new employment opportunities to improve and broaden the tax base. It allows more revenue to remain in the local economy. So it's. It, it's, it's something that you want to consult with the commissioner's office on as you move forward. Uh it's. It's used by municipalities to leverage new property taxes generated by a specific project or projects within the fine geographic district. Any portion of the new taxes may be used to finance public or private projects for a defined statutorily valuable period of time. So it's, it's all locally driven and. Would involve discussion as far as. Where you're gonna go. For that.
We're not, not necessarily looking to burn through. Money because it's there, it's. This law changed. I mean, all the money's just sitting there right now, it's. Just doing nothing and. We have put out to businesses. You know, to kind of. Use some of that funding to bring businesses to town. Media stores, what have you. And. Nobody's taking this up on it. So it's, uh, you know, until we make changes to what we can do with. The criteria, it's just gonna sit there. And uh this, a lot of us in town have been working on. Uh improving the safety of the transfer station by having a drive through. Um MSW or a household waste. Uh path, uh rather than backing out. And. Uh that comes at a cost. And if we can use money, that's. Not gonna change the tax burden on the, you know. On the, on the townspeople. And uh. You know, it, it's worth moving forward to see if we can change that at the ordinance. Um, you know, and it's just one example. For me anyways, I can't speak to those two guys.
You're right.
So uh. Maybe you can keep that on the. Parking law, so to speak. Recreation bylaws. No, no, I. Uh we need to have a public hearing in January, so. So we'll have to. Probably, how many days we need to, so fourteen days for public hearing?
Uh so it's ten days, so you have to. You have to have public hearings.
I'm asking you what the, what the statutory is for, for, for how many days you have to post.
Ten days or the day of the public.
Right.
And then that's in the newspaper.
Right, so.
Posted right after the new year and have it in January or posted during the holidays. And have it right after the holidays on our first meeting.
Yeah, we do that, so we'll shoot this, give us on the back burner and, and then for our fourth one, you know.
Yeah.
We'll have a, be prepared to have a public hearing the first meeting in January. Leave it up to you to keep us on task and then.
Yeah.
All right, recreational community bylaws.
Okay, so you have the. Proposed bylaws starting with revamped bylaw. Some changes made. Had some time to look at it, so.
I still have reservations about signing up on the. On the uh. Bylaws at this point until we change the personnel handbook. I don't think we'd be one without the other. I think personal handbook needs to be short enough for us before we can. Sign up on these.
Dave wants to make a project getting him.
So the, we have personal handbook that all of our employees are kind of, that's what the. Tommy Andrew uses to govern. Multi people, but we want to start shifting volunteers into that handbook as well. A- as a means of, of leverage, I guess.
Right.
Uh from a legal perspective.
You're right, um, so. And that's what's, that's the next item on the agenda is, is the personnel handbook. Amendment, so I've been waiting for the town attorney, he didn't get it till Tuesday, um so. So I haven't tonight, but he was unable to do so. To address that issue with. With um volunteers. Um. But I know that there are a few other, there, there may be a couple other items that are coming up, I mean, I know. Uh we looked at salaries, salary, salary scale needs to be changed, there's also one other area we may want to look at. What is it?
People who were topped up, is there an alternative?
Yeah.
Method of reward.
So the. Yeah, oh, that's what it is, yeah, one definitely.
The language in there now allows for a, a bonus, but I think we should clean the language up to budget for. For capital employees. So maybe you could. Develop some language for us to consume. Anything else you guys want off the wall, I don't know, we're gonna push something, but the next meeting. All right, now we're on to the townwide survey.
Yeah, so you have that, um Stacy was able to compile all that for us and. Lightning speed.
There are about the same amount of responses that we normally have for them.
Not really surprised.
Probably same people go to town meeting. Yes. So I'll get that out there for everyone to read.
So that should be in the packet if you want to pull up on my screen.
I wasn't sure if I had, if I only had, I didn't, wasn't sure if I had, they have all, all of it.
I've got all of this.
Cause there are eight questions. And I thought that I own them, but I didn't.
Think that's like. Five percent or less than five percent of the, of the uh municipal structures in the. The community that responded.
It was a little hard to return, I, I feel, but. But. If you were to bring it back, like, you'd either do it in person or you'd nail it and potentially people would put their return address. And I personally wouldn't care if you were, but maybe some people.
All eight are in here.
No, it was, uh, we talked about that. Um before we sent it out. And uh. And we decided to use the, as, cause it was no extra cost to the town to put it out. To do tax bills, um but I don't disagree. It was a concern of mine that we weren't reaching out to the. Indirect, non, you know, the indirect taxpayers in town.
Would be a good way of doing that.
I don't know how we'd know who renters are, I mean, I don't. Good question.
You'd have to do a targeted research, you know, probably see, figure out what the variables are, we try to reach your audience and, and. Try to hold to it, probably have to.
Could you do a survey like on, on your website? Wouldn't you not be responding to? Okay, so it would have to be a resident, you'd have to have some way proving that they were a resident.
I mean, I had to. I had an email asking a question about the survey and I didn't recognize the name and it took me a while to respond because the first thing I did was email to Aaron saying. Is this a town resident that I'm responding to? And they were able to find out, and it took a few days to get that information and get back to the person. She just called, she doesn't do it. So do you, do you want to review this or what did the?
I think. Ten minutes and nine and, I mean, you can.
Okay. So we had eight questions, we sent this out in the. Tax billing. First question was, would you favor a sound ordinance so help prevent phosphorus running runoff and drinking local waterways, eighty one, yes, thirteen, no. Um. Some people. So there's a lot of response here, um.
So first couple, three questions were planted board, but they asked us to tag those three questions into the.
Should commercial development be limited in certain sections in town, seventy four said yes, and he said no. Um but then there's, oh, it depends on the types of business.
It's not just a guess at millions or anything, I mean, those are very.
Yeah.
Those are discussion based questions.
Yes, yes. Do you support town promoting the preservation of land for conservation and or recreation, eighty seven, yes, no, fifteen?
The biggest question is when you look at the. Population overall, how accurate is that? You know, based on the sampling, cause it's a very small sampling.
It's kind of food for thought. Number four, what is your preferred method of learning about town events? We got newsletter, local newsletter, email, social media. Let's say.
Did you break that down to? Numbers? What, what thing came up the most? Or did you just list out what people?
It's just listed, so.
It would be nice to know what came up on top. Or even the.
I, I agree. I agree, but yeah, that is, that would be good. We uh. Kind of scrambled the, just done for the meeting.
Surveys was not listed in there, were they?
Aren't you curious?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think the main idea was just to try to get some conversation about.
Yeah.
Yeah. What changes would you like to see in town? Forums for discussion town issues that are moderated. More family, multi generational opportunities, water recreation. Arts music center, we could provide transportation for kids to Waterville, I guess. Connecting people, adults in town. More commercial, moratorium on the energy line. Photo ID for voting. More green space, public access for swimming, more business zoning. Improvements, whoever on EV cars, uh, uh, oh no, oh, this is banned, solar panels, EV cars and trucks. Tax EV car and trucks.
What about um? Doing something like this out of town meeting? You, you still, if you check everybody in, they have to be a town resident. They get checked off that they're there. And um. A thing and say, can you please fill this out real quick? And return it on your way out.
Sure.
I mean, you might get some of the same people, but.
Yeah.
You know. Just another way.
That the, the thought was, is boy, if you set it out in every tax bill.
Yeah.
We're gonna get a. Inflection. All we got about the same in town meeting is like a point.
It was, and it was nothing that really stood out, it was all over the map. It wasn't like any concentrations in any generic area and it was polarized too.
Well, that's Castleboro.
Yeah, I mean, it was just.
People want to see, some people want to see keep it rural, I want to see zoning. Less thicker, that's a good one.
Keeping it rural and zoning is not as, they're not mutually exclusive. And those aren't economies.
Oh, yeah.
There was one that wanted more business though, Holly, so there was a more business and keep it rural, so those are opposites.
This, this counts for paying.
And there's local business and there's rural based business.
Yep.
So it's creating more local rural based business and those infrastructures that support it. So.
We don't know what they meant, they just said, I'm just, that was the problem, it wasn't.
Like my tree farm.
New transfer station one.
It could have been talking about that they want another pizza joint too, I mean.
Yeah.
Who knows what they meant by more business. We don't need it.
More support for public program.
They had a donut shop.
But that was a coffee shop, not a donut shop.
What challenge, what challenges do you see in town? Communication within town. Living's going out. More isolation of families, elderly, everyone, less ability to walk. Uh within the East Village due to traffic, lots of shoulders, I don't know, someone working on. We're spending lots of money in public works. Okay, all the services we have now, little discussion of what is a town's priority, I assume from our budget. As education, property maintenance, health, welfare. You do a great job at maintaining property with fire protection, excellent roads, pretty good job in education. We have little investment in health and welfare of the people. Who live here or preserving the land and water to continue. Use. For agriculture, forestry, recreation or sustainable use. More services for drug alcohol prevention. Algae bloom, crime, drug speed limits, not for spending money needlessly, getting people to vote. Sewer bill increase. Places to walk, these are places to walk, we got trails.
Safe places to walk. Good root trail systems. Let's drill town in private.
Anything else you like to worry about? Duckyards, sand heat pumps.
We didn't want to ask.
Good job keeping on top of things, that was nice. That's where there's a rare wastes of real life in urban areas, this is what. Some of the clerks have seen your job well. Uh improve the visibility of town measures, like board members outreach. Oh, but here's, here's someone who says the opposite about the leadership is, there's always challenges, but I have seen some excellent examples of good leadership, keep it up. I think it's the new town mayor is doing a good job, I like this so much.
Did you print it?
Says give Kathy and Gina a raise. Said, great, great job in the ball fields, bar rooms, and everything good. Oh, yeah, that's. You know how awful that was?
That was very entertaining.
Maybe if Stacy has some time next couple weeks, she can. I just. Give a little bit more granular.
Yeah, with the.
So our direction is not clear.
Talking about ball fields, it's a little bit out of order, I'm about to have them done at our for funds. Do I have to ask you, because? I have the original, I can give you the original, what we had, what he hasn't given me an invoice for what he's gonna do to fields. But then what the original, what the breakdown was and what he voted, so I know to get your permission to spend that money, I know. It will probably like maybe five thousand, six thousand, fifteen thousand. That. I have preparation been awarded for. That was the original one, so again, he's about to do them, I had asked for an invoice.
Thirteen thousand.
Yeah, you did, I didn't have, yeah, you did, but do I have your permission when the invoice comes in, spend it? Cause it's gonna be like five thousand.
You already voted on that?
I'm just saying, I don't have to come with an invoice saying it's over my procurement.
I'm quite certain that we did it.
I seem to remember seeing this before.
Yeah, so I'm just saying right now, it's about to come with an invoice, so I don't need to say my invoice is five thousand, can I pay it?
Oh, I see what you're saying, well, you've already gotten the authority.
Yeah, so I've got the authority, I just double checking.
Okay, I get you, cause it's over the procurement policy.
Right, so I was just double checking, so I didn't get. Slapped on my hand saying you didn't do it right.
Holly. Does this need to be updated? This is your original plan.
Oh, you gotta talk that out here?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, basically. Yeah, yeah, it's. Yeah, the phases. Phases now, we're getting them done.
We had like, we had it broken down.
We're on track. What's the discussion?
Only stretching.
All right, town reports. Um. The uh, I know I brought this up in the past, um but it's seems to. Not be consistent, you know. Particularly. I realize that we have no control without fire, if our submit their information, but it'd be nice if. If you want to submit quarterly reports and a rescue department, it would be nice to set the town department if they would start. Submitting reports.
I can, I can imagine that.
So that we can see what the process progress is in both. Both departments.
Sure.
Types of calls they're doing, go ahead, Tom.
Uh I talked to the fire chief one time. About.
Just one?
Ask me tomorrow. Uh. I told him that what you should do is keep track of the time you spend. In extreme comments, like people calling up, want this and that. Keep a track of that. So that you know how much time you spent. You would find the hot business. That the rest of mine. Don't even know you were a volunteer. And report to you guys. When we have a fire, telling you how many fires you went to, how many firefighters you responded, you know, just. Report to you guys and let you know. What was going across the street. And I'm gonna talk to him again, of course, and I'm gonna tell him. About what you would like done. And. We'll see, I won't talk to him, cause I find him asking him to submit a report and. I'm not speaking for him.
Yeah.
But that's my opinion that I would see us, the fire show, report what we did in the month time.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that's a good idea, Tom, um I served on the um. On a task force that looked at recruitment and retention in another town for fire departments. And. We do a monthly report, and what that does is, that kind of just to tell, it shows the community what it is that you're doing. And I think it's, I I think it's, it's it's good, it's good to showcase that. Um so I think talk to Walker about that and see if that's something he can. He can work towards doing.
Might not do until, cause. I tried to tell him, what do you want me around for, and he said, oh, you've got. A few years' experience in firefighting, and you've been in different situations, so he says, I might ask you. Different things at different times, so that's. What I do.
Well, I'm sure they're glad to have you around, Tom, I like, I like our conversations, so. Alright, what do we got for further reports?
Further reports?
Anything else, you have anything to add?
No.
We have a motion to accept the reports.
Given that there are no objection, I make that motion.
Alright, all those in favor?
Alright.
Rio. Other items, as may be presented by the town manager. Alright, uh the only other thing that uh I'd like to bring up is um in in uh. Rick's already touched on it at this meeting, um I'd ask that the town manager, if this, or the other. Select board members to establish another email, a general email. Book questions or what have not. Um. In case, just another avenue for uh for folks to. Reach out to us, you know, maybe something that you can delegate to one of the other staff members, just please, so that.
So it'd be like selectmen at Vasselboro.
Whatever, you know, generally.
I always say questions. Question at Vasselboro, not yet, you know, a question, send it to question@vasselboro.net.
Okay, yeah.
This is it.
Original, right?
Okay, general question.
Anybody in the audience have any questions or? Needs? Go ahead, Tom.
Uh I understand that the state. The sewer district. Had a meeting in the gust of about. What? About rebuilding Main Street, have, what was their? Funds and who's, because I didn't report, so I'm gonna put the sign more back, and this meeting, did you go to it?
Um.
And here's a couple weeks ago, I guess.
I I didn't go to the one a couple weeks, so I did meet with them for August summer. With with the sanitary district. It's gonna happen until after the new year.
I understand that. I heard you very much long do that.
I've I've been in communication with them and told them how very interested we are in having these discussions. Um so I expect that to occur as the month or. Um. So absolutely, yeah, so. I did hear that they were gonna put sidewalks.